Like said every two minutes, like. Maybe three.
The guards. And if you don't go on.
That's only most things. Did we work it out? Sheriff give Blake a place escort to this meeting? Turn the mail back. How you doing, Blake?
Yeah, Mark's on his way. And I have a hurry, Danny.
We will call our September the seventh, two thousand twenty-one Commissioner Meeting to Order. Glad that everyone is with us and we appreciate you taking the time out to come. So we've called our meeting to order and I'm gonna ask Dennis Aldridge to lead us in first.
Lord, we're grateful for yet another day that we have to be in such a wonderful place. Enjoy so many blessings that you give to us. Lord, we recognize now the needs around us, people that we care about, people that we don't know, but have heard about, and people in places around the world that we have never seen or never will. We ask your hand upon them and we pray that you would, Lord, help us to be aware of your working in the lives of everybody. Lord, we pray for wisdom today, that as we meet together here for the good of this county, its residents, that you would give us wisdom, discernment, that everything we say and do would be honorable to you. Christ name. Amen.
Amen. All right, would you please stand and well, that's Woody and he'll lead us in our pledge to apply.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we go into our next step, I'd like to ask everybody to remember these people that's got the COVID. I got a call before I came up to the meeting today and they've had to put Steve Nelson back on life support. So let's remember that family and those that have passed away. All right. Three point two A, Proclamations and Awards. We have any, Mr. Barry?
I believe our sheriff has one, Madam Chairman, or we really share?
I guess we can do that.
Or we can come back.
We can come back to it if you want, Mike.
We can wait for just a little bit till at least Martin, I don't know where Dan's at, but Martin gets here.
Okay. All right. And three point two B, Public Comments. So far, no one has signed up or called or anything for public comment. All right. Three point two C, Board Appointments. We have one before us, Avery County Fire Commission, Fire Association appointee. They appointed Mark Taylor. And we need a motion to accept Mark as our Fire Commission.
Lord, do accept.
Exactly.
All right, Tim Phillips made the move and Dennis Aldridge second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Three point two, two, we have a review of Avery Fire Commission application, which is Scott Heath. And we have a Morris Library application, which is Carrie Hall. And Cindy said we still needed another person, if anybody's interested in going on the Morris Library. She's got applications and you can see her and get an application. All right. We'll move right along and we'll go ahead and do three point three B subdivision approval. We can get that in before our public hearing. If y'all would please, Tim, or?
What you have before you today is document, Avery County Plan Board is approved by motion August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a motion by John Welster, second by Riley Calhoun. Flat was presented for you today, has been approved by Avery County Plan Board, voting, all voting there, voting in favor. This Eagles Nest is a pud, which a pud is a plan unit development. That's where you have lots less than three quarters of an acre. And it's a part of our subdivision order. The planning department has inspected the sedentation, soil erosion, control, management practice, and they are installed and the improvements of the grazing plan is being followed. No settlement has left the site to my knowledge. The road grades are certified by the surveyor, Judd Howe, but no grades exceed eighteen percent. There's any questions concerning this plan unit development? Mr. Derek McCan is here and I'll answer any questions you have also.
This is nine lots, isn't it, Derek?
Yes, ma'am, nine lots.
There could be quite a few other, this is a phased development, so there's gonna be quite a few in this. What's the total number?
Total in this, where we bring it here, will be, after these, you'll see another, things right, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Total.
On the plan unit development.
Well, that was all part of that master, that master, that last implementation phase development. That included some previously.
Previously planted pud.
Previously planted, thank you, planted spaces that have now been reassigned. Is that kind of how I'm?
Sure, yeah, on the master plan, it showed future development areas in that, and that's all part of that future development area that's over on the master plan. Yep.
It's all contiguous.
Will they all be in the pud configuration?
All the, everything in the village, this is a village pud, so in that particular area, it'll all be pud in there. And that doesn't mean that they all would have to necessarily be that requirement. We've got some on here that are actually larger, that could be a state lot. But we keep them that pud for, basically to stay with what CCRs already have for the village, where everything's maintenance free, so it just all falls under the same umbrella.
And I'm redundant, everything aside specific. You have to first get your driveway in there before you can get to the home. Then once the septic, the health department shows up and they show you where you put your septic and where you put your well, then you have your setbacks. And then you, then you figure where your home is, and hopefully you don't have to do it with a pump, you know, and have gravity fall from the home. So that's why it's, it's Avery County, it's very unrelated, we have a lot of slopes and we have to, we work with those. And the first thing is to get your driveway into the, into the site.
So pud is less than three quarters of an acre per lot?
Yeah, it can be, it can be down to, I mean, it's basically postage stamps, that much. You can go to a pud where it's actually just the footprint or the foundation outline, or it can be up, it's not really say on the size of acres, it just goes smaller.
But you still have to have three quarters acres of green space, just like when we, if you do a townhouse, and you could do like four townhouses in a row, you'd still have to have at least a half acre for each townhouse to be there, you just can't keep jamming them in there. You have to have these green spaces in order to allow the pud to be.
Basically works in areas like this, so that you've got a lot of, you can take twenty acres in Avery County and add that twenty, you may have five good acres. So you're allowed to take and kind of maximize density on that five good acres and then save the other fifteen acres for green space or hiking trails or different things. So you're taking advantage of your good property and in kind of preserving, you know, a lot of acres in there. So it's kind of a give and take.
Yeah, it only meets, it only takes, say, the footprint of the building. Does that still give you enough space for water and soda?
Yeah, you know. Well, on a pud, there are no setbacks. So on a pud, you know, only setbacks you have in a pud are the exterior boundary lines. So everything on the inside, where a normal subdivision lot, you have setbacks which fall and are set under the CCRs or recorded covenants, like in Eagles Nest, it's a lot of places are twenty-five front, twenty-five backs, fifteen on the sides. When a pud, you can go zero lot lines, which allows townhomes and such where they're connected.
Right, and you'll have one well that serves all, when I said like four, you'd have one, well, you could serve up to twelve bedrooms. You have, you can service as many as twenty-five people off of one well without it being a part of the dean or system, so. You have one well and then you engineer your, Limber Ridge does a lot with their economy and stuff, and then you engineer your systems below, your septic systems, you have, plus you have to have a one hundred percent repair area if something goes bad. So you have, you have all this space and the little postage stamps, but you have all this space that, you know, supplements and lets it, lets it survive.
Which none of these are that way. These are all set up as individual private residences. It's the same area, if you guys remember, we done the tour, the first place we stopped in the big green yard there, we met with Aaron Winter, Flamingo Sports Manager, we had the individual homes, that same area, so it's just a continuation of that. These are actually a lot larger and more spaced than the area that you've seen. These are, these are all quite, quite a bit bigger lots.
So those other twenty-five that are pending from this area, they'll be presented as two puds?
It'll be just another phase of this pud. So what basically happens is the entire, the entire Eagles Nest Village, this section of this, these lots that we're bringing over the next, probably this one and two more phases, there'll be another phase and one more, and that'll be it. And that'll end the village at Eagles Nest. Those were presented as a master overall preliminary to the planning board. So before we can do this, we have to present the planning board with a full preliminary of all, which would be thirty-some lots, and they have to approve the overall scheme of that area. And then we fall back and we kind of split it up generally into about three or four phases and bring those as we get them online and get them ready.
Correct, Dennis, two more phases after this one, yes, sir? Like what you were saying, yeah, two more phases after this one of that area, the village.
You have enough space back for sewage rescue without using the green spaces?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, anything we do up there, whether it's the village, whether it's a state lot, all that stuff is already predetermined before we put it on a flat. Our engineering companies go out and they locate every system we're putting in, where it's going, where our wells are gonna be, so all that stuff's predetermined where it ever goes. It's done before it goes to a final for a planning board.
What I was asking was your rescue.
Your repair areas?
Yeah, your repair areas.
Yes.
They're dedicated.
Some of them are, I mean, up there, there are some repair areas in green spaces, but for the most part, they're stacked right up, so if you got your main here on your lot, then right below that, the soil's generally going around pretty consistent. Use that repair area, they keep you as close to the main dwelling as possible.
Are those cul-de-sacs where they come in and stop, are they big enough for fire trucks to, to get in and out easily?
Like cul-de-sacs at the end of the road? Because we have to, we do fire turnarounds every, less than seven hundred feet to feet, you can go up to seven hundred fifty feet before you have one, but the cul-de-sacs, you know, they're all, all the standard is seventy feet.
Yeah, three point, three point turnaround, yes, sir.
Thirty-five foot radius.
Yeah, they'll do a three point turnaround at seventy foot, seventy foot, thirty-five foot radius.
You have any more?
Well, this, this is within, I mean, I'm not saying it's not within code and ordinance, it, like I've just broken record, I still, the, the density issue still concerns me.
Well, you should love the pud setup, because the pud gives you guaranteed, basically, green space that can never be touched. So it's basically the density of it, you know, it's, if we go in and put lots, houses on four acres or five acres, then we may believe in thirty acres, it's never gonna be touched or have anything put on it.
But you're, but you're still having more housing, more dwellings in that than you would have if you went with traditional setbacks and regulations?
Uh, somewhat, this one not as much so, because most of these, we've got a lot of these are over, these lot, these are acre and a half lots. So, I mean, if we could done it the same way, we just kept it consistent because of our maintenance free in that specific area with the covenants. But I know, I know what you're talking about.
I mean, those, these, these twelve, you couldn't have put, I don't think, the majority of times, these twelve houses on traditional setbacks and regulations without going to this configuration.
Oh, it would've been close on this area. It just depends, you know, it just depends on what it is. But again, a plan unit development is something that every county has. It's, that's a nationwide thing, it's something that, it's not like it's just Avery County thing, we do that. I'm flying out Thursday morning to Oklahoma, I've gone out in Oklahoma. So, I mean, it's the same, same deal.
Plus it gives you price points too, it gives you lower end on your price point, you know the.
It's basically like you're looking at apartment buildings, I mean, apartment buildings, townhomes, all that stuff, to get those density areas, you gotta have that pud configure, that pud configuration. We're just not doing it as dense as we could. We could go in there and put, you know, fifty townhomes in there instead of this. So, I mean, you could actually go way more dense if you wanted to.
May I to approve?
Second.
All right, well, you have a motion on the floor to approve by Blake Vance and second by Tim Phillips. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Still your signature.
Good luck, everybody. All right. My county commanders.
Tommy, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, God bless you, thank you guys, and God bless everyone, you guys are awesome.
I absolutely appreciate all of you.
Everybody has. Avery County.
Thank you, Tim. Nine. Thank y'all.
All right, we'll move right along. Three point three C, our tax administration report, Mr. Bruce Daniel.
Good afternoon to y'all.
Good afternoon, Bruce.
Start with the collections for August for your approval of three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Give it to approve.
Second.
All right, Blake Vance made the motion to approve, then Mr. Woody Hall Young Junior the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Based on previous years, did you not leave a digit off of that?
No, we did not, I had a miscommunication with our printing company for our bills and they didn't make it out in the last couple of weeks of August, so that's on me, that's on my back on that particular one, so, no, you're exactly right, there should be an extra comma in there. So, yeah, that's on me, so. But normally.
I hope you can look forward to those this week?
Yes, that is my goal.
Don't go to the bell box.
And so I'm looking for September to be quite a bit better. If people are looking for a bill, they can go online, everything is there. So with the twenty twenty-one bill, everything's there, so if everybody's just desperate to pay, you can go do that, you can go print something off online to have for your records. But along with their collections, Mr. Young sometimes comes some releases, and for August, we have a rather large sum of eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
I hear a motion to approve of releases. Now I hear a second. All in favor, releasing eight dollars and forty-nine cents, say aye do. We got that out and Woody did.
As you can see, the sales for August, just took the opportunity to focus on one, one particular area, literally one particular area, and with the number of Sugar Top units, I had four or five more to choose from for the month. So you can see that they are, they're turning over for quite the profit from the people that purchased them the last time around, so. The sales have slowed down a little bit for this year compared to last year, but not much. We had a hundred and twenty-six sales for August of this year, and a success ratio of seventy percent versus last year at a hundred and forty-six sales at eighty-eight percent. So again, it just shows that our reappraisal, which we are struggling mightily to get done, is needed. Our appraisal is out of date and especially with the sales that we have right now.
Some people trip. I would give it own price.
We have a number of acres on these Sugar Top units where, like Mr. Barry, you just indicated they're purchasing, they purchased them for forty-five thousand dollars, put twenty thousand dollars worth of remodel into it, and they're selling it for close to two hundred. It's unbelievable.
It's happened before.
Yes. Everything that we are seeing, other than the sales numbers, has indeed happened before. Let's just hope that what typically follows this explosion misses us this time, so.
Or not as much.
Or not as much, absolutely. So any other questions or concerns that I can address? Thank you, y'all.
Thank your staff, too.
Absolutely.
So time freezes begin January first, twenty twenty-two. You freeze time again on January first, twenty twenty-two? As far as the practice goes.
For one day. It's accurate for one day.
Yeah, and then you got four years catching it.
I think Phillips gonna give us a little update a little bit later on about road conditions over there. Yeah. All right.
I think the Sheriff's, Madam Chairman, if you want to go back to the awards.
Okay, we'll go back to our Proclamations and Awards, three point two A.
Before I did the presentation, I want to say a couple things real quick. I'm doing a presentation today, Clinton Phillips, and I want to say something before I get started. I started in law enforcement in nineteen eighty-five. Nineteen eighty-eight, I had the pleasure of being asked to come to Avery County Sheriff's Office as the first narcotics officer that was full-time narcotics for this county of Avery. That changed the whole trajectory of my life. My granddad was real good friends with Bev Daniels, when Bev was sheriff. And through that, when I was little, I got to know Clinton Phillips. And it was an honor to work for him, the couple of years I got to work for him. So if Tim and Mark can come down here, I'm gonna give you something, let you, and let you, I'll present it to you in just one second. So I've got this plaque that I want to put up at the detective office. Now, something else to think about, during the time that I worked with Clinton, I also worked with Mark as a detective, and so we worked together. And now Clinton's grandson is working as a narcotics officer. I think that's quite a legacy in itself. So here's what I've done, is whereas Clinton Ira Phillips served as Sheriff of Avery County from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety, and whereas during his terms in office, Clint Phillips made fighting drug abuse one of his greatest priorities, and whereas Sheriff Clint Phillips began the following programs during his terms to fight drug abuse, began the first time, full-time drug officer position in Avery County, began the first Canine Program in Avery County, and started the Dare Program in Avery County. Therefore, the Drug Enforcement Division of Avery County Sheriff's Office will honorably be named Clinton Phillips Drug Enforcement Division in honor and recognition of Sheriff Phillips' memory and dedication to the citizens of Avery County. So I would like to present this to you guys. He's wanting to get a picture, and I'm sure he is too. I'm sure she is too. So we're gonna put this up outside the detective office, so that it will always be there. I don't think, I honestly do not think I would be sheriff with that with Clint Phillips. I don't think I would've had the ability to do what I do now.
Oh, please. Oh, well, no.
Danny got me the photograph today, so.
It reads this? Yeah, well, it reads this for about four minutes before the public hearing.
Y'all men do great jobs.
Yeah, aggravating, aggravating. So we always, hey, Daniel, okay, I'm gonna make at least two hundred dollars.
There you go.
That is cool, that's great.
So I fired off letters to the Wildlife Resource Commission, everyone had an email address or something.
I was just talking about, I told you, doing, maybe she's worried that they're not having a, maybe they have to pay people. And only had, it only did five because of the, uh, two people, that was, yeah, well, yeah. Well, they did the same, you did the same thing.
You did four.
But it ended up being about the same. They're gonna be given back about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. But they didn't do any small repairs. And they're not gonna do it, they don't, that's what they did with, Whammy doing it, I've talked to Whammy. Uh, but yeah, they're.
They never showed us the beer can they found. I don't know if they found one, or if they just said they did. And they never, they took the ones that they, that there was too many things on the box.
Something you need to further agree. And that is why the Sheriff's Association finds every time they want more jurisdiction, more authority, more power, because they can't handle it.
No, they can't. Well, I had to do a Phil Soprati test. And I said, I'm not gonna do well with this. I'm fat, and I've got a bad ankle, and I don't have good balance. I said, I'm not gonna handle this real well. And, um, and so I did the Phil Soprati test, and he blew a breathalyzer, and I blew point zero zero. I wasn't drinking. And they kept us for over two hours. They searched my car without saying a word. They dug through my car and my boat, they took Johnny out. They made me leave all my stuff, my cell phone, everything in my pocket in the vehicle. It was, I don't know if it's illegal or they did or not.
No, it ain't. And they don't, but they don't know. They make crap up, and they go, wow.
Well, my friend.
We fight against them all the time, because they keep on.
My friend that works in the Clark, Burke County's office says later, I take it, she said, they'll make up statutes of law. Well, my friend works in Clark's office, she said they might step up all the time. But no, I mean, it was, they held us for over two hours. And they put me through that, made me blow the breathalyzer. He wouldn't tell me what I blew, and I said, was it point zero zero? So that's what happens when you're not drinking.
All right, we bring our meeting back to order, and we have a public hearing for two thousand and twenty-one, CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program First Public Hearing. And we, we need a motion to go into our public hearing. All right, Mr. Vance made the motion, and Mr. Woody Hall Young seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll turn it over to Michelle Ball.
So the purpose of the public hearing is to give opportunity for citizens input concerning an upcoming, excuse me, an upcoming application submission for CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Fund. Now, the county actually was awarded seven hundred fifty, well, I take that back. The county was awarded six hundred?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, I'm sorry. Six hundred and ten thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen to perform the same project. What they plan to do this time is hopefully apply for the full thing. We've not fully met. There's a committee taking applications at the moment. Actually, we've just finished taking applications for participants. And there's ten million dollars in the budget right now for maximum award of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could come to the county. And those funds will be used to assist low-income residents, homeowners with housing assistance. And we're looking to do that in the form of home replacement, because those are usually the worst homes out there. And basically, right now, it's really hard to get contractors to do small repair work on older homes. This way, we get the money spent and use it to do, to help the people in the worst need. And eligible homeowners, they would receive safe and sanitary housing in the form of a new manufactured double wide, put on a permanent foundation. That could be a single wide based on the property size, but we try not to do that unless we have to. We did have to do that with the last program. And the old dilapidated home would be demolished. And the county hopes to assist up to five homeowners this time around. In addition, I think we're looking at doing emergency repairs as well. With the last project, Whammy handled those projects. It was, small repairs, less than five thousand dollars per house. And they were able to weave that in with their weatherization money and make it go really far. I have not gotten final totals on their houses yet. The eligible applicants must own and occupy the home full-time, no second homeowners, and have household income less than eighty percent of the county median, which is set by HUD, and for, it's based on household size. And a two-person household can't make over thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And that includes children in the household as well. Eligible properties must be located in Avery County. However, we cannot work on a property located, any portion of the property cannot be in the floodplain, which, this is CDBG, I mean, not the house, but the property. But we've not had a problem with that so far. And this is, like I said, this is the second round of the Neighborhood Revitalization Funding that Avery County supplied for. And technically, we should be finishing that project up. However, due to COVID, due to some other delays, we've asked for, asked the state and was awarded or approved a six-month extension. So that, I'll be back probably in March to do a close-out public hearing for that one. Let's see, where am I at? They've been able to provide four homes, four families in Avery County with homes by replacing their old house. And the average cost of those replacements, and this is not including admin costs, is about seventeen, a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars a home, which is actually on par. We're doing Mitchell County as well, and theirs is about a hundred and fifteen thousand. The program also provides funds for emergency repairs, like I said, that Whammy handled. And they were able to assist several homes. Committee's been assembled to help with the planning process and the selection. And applicants for the program, like I said, we hope to have this public hearing a little earlier so we could advertise that that applications were being accepted, but we weren't, and we already had the date set for September third as the application deadline. But it was advertised in the newspaper and the radio and online, and.
We got five applications.
So I think that's good, I think that's good. And I mean, I, and, because we're gonna have to select those applications, those homes before the application to the state goes in in early October or early next month. So we need time to go look at those homes before the committee delays, which ones are gonna participate. And that's really about all I have. I will be doing a second, we'll have to do a second public hearing. I'll do that at the October meeting, and by that time, we'll have homes selected, and I'll know what areas of the county they're in by the end.
Michelle, I'm gonna ask, I think you already said something about, where does the families go while y'all are doing all this?
There is funding in there to help. We ask them to stay with families if they can. And that's, and most people are able to stay. It's, sometimes it can be two, three, or four months, you know? What we like to do is go in and sit the new home, then tear the old one down, and let them move in. That's not always possible. But there is funding in the project to put them up, you know, we would have to find them, it has to be safe and clean housing. And we can pay for them to, if they rent a trailer, or there's been times when we've put people up in hotels. Been able to get deals for a couple of months to put somebody up in a hotel for a couple of months.
All right, thank you for that information. Does anyone have any questions?
I've just got a comment, Ms. Martha, sorry, but we could not do this without Michelle, the High Council of Government, so I wanna thank her during this time for all the hard work that she puts in.
And you all have done a great job. See, as some of you know, I used to do the entire project. And things have happened, my job changed, so I'm only able to do the compliance part of it with the state. I help with the state, and the county, with CDBG funds, have been able to hire a rehab specialist that does the day-to-day work. And he's done a great job, too. I mean, especially in the past year and a half, everything that's going on, everything has been delayed, or. If it's not material, it's been, you can't go into the house because somebody's sick, type of thing. And so I think to only ask for a six-month extension, I think that's, in my opinion, that's, that's great, because I figured we need a lot longer to get this thing finished.
When is the award window? When will you?
When will that end?
Yes.
Uh, okay, this is the Department of Commerce, so I'm hoping it could be anywhere between. It could be anywhere, I've got to have the application in by, I think, the fourteenth of October. And it can be anywhere between December and February. I've had, depends on when they, when they decide to do it.
It took us ninety days to get the extension approved.
Yeah, something that should have taken them more than a week.
Ninety days for six months, that's pretty concerning, right?
And I will let the board know that, too, the recipients, that we did get their home in, didn't have a lot of separate problems and well problems. Last winter, they called me personally and said, I was warm, and I didn't know what that meant. That means a whole lot. So again, I want to, I thank the state for this program, and I thank Michelle for all her hard work and the committee.
And this has always been a great program. It was great when it was non-competitive. I hate that it's competitive now, but that's, that's politics, that's down on the state level. And, you know, that's it, you felt good. You know, you have to deal with some, sometimes some picky homeowners, but you know, in the end, they're gonna be in that warm, safe home for the winter or the summer. And no more leaky roofs, no more, you know, having to worry about putting plastic on the windows and having to keep that up all winter, or where they're probably gonna find water or oil this year. And they're pretty much, they're pretty much set now.
Good news. All right, if none more questions, we will ask for a motion to go out of our public hearing.
So I'm going to second.
All right. Mr. Aldridge made the motion, and Tim Phillips seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's all we needed to do, is that correct?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back up to three point three A, Via Health Updates, Dustin Burleson.
Sorry, someone's plugged in my computer.
And then, yeah, we thank you too. First I take down, down the side misty.
All those county I T people we have is the best.
He should be the highest paid.
Highest paid, man.
Can I, can I run you the only one?
I think we should put him on call like doctors, and people largely just call him anytime.
Probably was.
Well, good afternoon, guys. I'm Dustin Burleson with Via Health, and I'm the Community Relations Regional Director. And here, what we try to do is just go around and give some regional updates on what's going on with Via, and kind of how that affects your county and things such as that. So I think you guys represented some of the statistics for some data around services and who the providers are, how many people in Avery County have been seen by some hair health provider. But also want to talk a little bit about, for those of you who may not know, what is Via Health and kind of what we do. So we are a local government agency, and we currently support twenty-two counties in western North Carolina, although there is a consolidation happening right now with Cardinal MCO, where they're coming in to become Via, so our counties will become much larger and move more towards the central and eastern part of the state. We offer three distinct health plans, so we've got really the Medicaid-funded people, so anybody that's a Medicaid recipient in Avery County, those who are uninsured or underinsured. We also get an allotment of state funds that we funnel back through to the providers. And then also what's considered IDD or Innovation, so somebody with an intellectual or developmental disability. Also wanted to just touch on the House Bill four oh three, which is Medicaid Managed Care. And this is really looking at how we've got, and you guys may have heard, the standard and tailored plans that's coming into North Carolina as far as healthcare goes. So I'm just gonna hit some of the high marks here. The goal of, the goal of Medicaid transformation is to really deliver whole-person care, get more quality care, make sure that it's, you know, instead of fee for service, it's based on quality of service, to improve member experience, improve provider experience, and then overall, just support a more holistic, healthier North Carolina. So North Carolina has now moved into what is called prepaid health plans. We are one of those. There's three types of PHPs. So Standard Plans, which we entered the phase of July one. So all people who didn't follow those, Tailored Plan is now a Standard Plan, so you may hear from those guys. Tailored Plan, which is basically what we're gonna become, and then the Tribal Option for the Eastern Band of Cherokee. If you look here at the map, it shows the different regions of the five standard health plans or PHPs that we've got. So that's AmeriHealth, Healthy Blue, which is formerly Blue Cross, United Healthcare, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health, which serves three, four, and five as far as the regions go. You guys are region number two. And so it could be that, or just something for you guys to know, is the rollout for Standard Plan came about with the state after there was the pause of COVID, a lot of people were auto-enrolled into a Standard Plan and didn't really get to choose one of those Standard Plans. And so, and that was because maybe they got a letter in the mail from the state, they really didn't even open it, and they had to pick one of these plans, but if they didn't, after a certain point, they got auto-enrolled. And what they found when they got auto-enrolled is that maybe their provider that they see, or their doctor, isn't actually contracted with this health plan. And so there was a different way that they had to take another step to get into a different plan. So there really are two different plans. There's the Standard Plan, which went live again July one, we're in that phase now. And then July twenty twenty-two, so next year, Tailored Plans will go live. And the biggest difference between Standard Plan and Tailored Plan is the Standard Plan really is the majority of the Medicaid recipients. Tailored Plan is the high-cost, high-need, really complex people or individuals who have things, for example, behavioral health, substance use, or even diabetes, chronic disease management kind of things. And so those fall into a Tailored Plan, which actually, it really gets you more eyes-on approach, I guess you'd say. Here was just, oh, hold on. So in a minute, there is a slide here that kind of shows you the differences between the Standard Plan and Tailored Plan. So on the left, you have the type of services that you would receive or be eligible for if you were in the Standard Plan. And on the right, it shows you what you have to be in in order to receive those services. So if you're somebody, if you're a kid that's in residential level of care treatment, you would have to be in the Tailored Plan. And most of those kids automatically fall in that based on claims data. Most of your enhanced services like ACT Team or SAIOP, which are really high-level substance use. substance use or behavioral treatment, would also fall in there. And anybody who's on the Innovations waiver would also fall under tailored plan. Again, just a few of the different populations that it serves. You guys, I'm sure, probably looked at this. The standard plan enrollment, as you can see, it started opening enrollment back in March. And it went live July one of this year. And there is an enrollment broker with a phone number here if somebody were to call you guys and say, hey, I really need some help. Kind of the other thing, just to, I'll touch on this. There's, to become a tailored plan, you had to submit a RFA, which is basically an application, which was twenty-six hundred forty-five pages long. It basically showed everything we would do as a tailored plan. We've been preparing for, to become a tailored plan for about four years. So everything we've done, we've been about two years ahead in the transition. We basically took two hundred and fifty-four pounds of documents down to Raleigh. And just as FYI, we was awarded the RFA to become a tailored plan on July twenty twenty-two, which is pretty exciting for us. And then here, just to show you some numbers for Avery County specific, there are currently three thousand four hundred twenty-eight Medicaid-eligible residents in Avery County. Three thousand one hundred and thirty of those were estimated to move into the standard plan, which again went live July, which leaves about two hundred and ninety-eight staying with Via through the tailored plan after that. And that two ninety-eight number might seem really small or sound really small, but it's really a pretty significant number in all of these counties as far as what they receive with that. And then there's just a couple of slides on transition of care, things like that. We've also got the Cardinal Innovations. So for you guys who may not know, we're in the process of consolidation. This happened a couple of months ago when we began and it was announced. And so basically, we're in higher, in the process of staffing all those people as we move forward. And this is kind of the picture of all the catchment areas of MCOs on the state map prior to consolidation. So if you look at the dark blue, which is the majority of western North Carolina, that's all Via catchment. And if you look at the other blue, that shows the Cardinal catchment. And so I think eleven of those counties have decided to come with us. Others have picked other MCOs based on where they are regionally. The other thing I just wanted to mention here real quick is, and then I'll take any questions you guys may have. Via has been working through Families First Block Grant to provide all our local DSS's funding to help with kids staying in homes and placements through anything under child welfare and as well as trainings for the county. And so we worked with Avery County DSS. They were approved for twenty-nine thousand dollars that we're currently in contract with to basically help them fund things like helping families in child welfare be able to fix a home or fix a car in order to stay in that home or be able to go to your appointments. And also there was some trainings around that, too. Lastly, been working with Avery Sheriff, getting ready to deliver sixty of the Narcan kits to you guys and get those donated, just so the officers can have at least two per vehicle. And if you don't know about Narcan, Narcan is what you use on an overdose. They can pretty much bring you back alive, in a sense. So. Any questions?
We, we went a couple of years ago when the transformation was first announced and went through all the the initial, the initial explanations and all. And then it went to sleep for nine months when it was supposed to roll out. And then it showed up with no warning and no, I mean, it was just like, oh, by the way. And the same with the transformation, I mean, the change of, of the Cardinal and the whole like that.
Yes.
Sort of just happened.
Yes.
And we, at times, it feel, we feel, or I, I, I think we feel that we are at the end of the communication loop. And everything happens to us as opposed to happening with us. And with the money that's in, in the S and with the number of people that we have a conversation with concerning care, there's, there's a lot of, I don't know, on our end. And I wish that were not so. I wish it was, I mean, it's a very convoluted system. I understand that. And this does nothing but muddy the waters even more, in my view. And we, we constantly hear of lack of funding and that there's issues and we're, there's, the sky's falling and it's all going to fall apart. And, and yet, things continue to happen. So it is, it is a very soft target in terms of trying to put your, wrap your head around this. And I've got a lot of reading and trying to figure it out. And, and every time I think I know, I realize I don't know. And I, I wish, well, I guess while I'm saying this all this, I wish we could have more, you know, some information and input on the front end of this instead of it just happening to us and that's going, whether it's definitely can do about it.
Yeah, I would say I agree with everything he said. There was a lot of start-stops. You know, the secretary is really the one driving this at the state level. And, you know, the biggest difference that I would say is used to, we were the only player in the game. And so I think we did a pretty good job, especially early on, going around and saying, this is what's happening. This is what you need to prepare for. And as things paused through the COVID, I guess, stuff, and all of a sudden just started back, it caught everybody off guard in a sense. And so one of the things that we're trying to do is continue to go around in ways like this to say, hey, this is what's going on out there. Even the people receiving these letters, there's actually experience in being in a standard plan or tailored plan is, you know, the same people we're trying to, to go and educate with. And then, you know, not being the only player now, you've got all the standard plans, you've got commercial plans. It's going to be competing, it's going to be a tailored plan. And so the healthcare system is really under transformation. And so, you know, we're trying to do our part in that, to educate the community. However, you know, the timeliness and things like that, it's just out of air control as well. But I do agree with what he said.
Well, right on this, and also he did mention this, but we are the first county to start the telecare. Where the officers have the telemedicine in, in the vehicle when they get that call. Hopefully, we can get that person in front of a doctor quicker. And they can say, A, leave them at home, B, take them to the emergency room, C, take them to jail. So.
Yes.
We're not going to stop till we get working because there's other counties want, wanting the product. And we got to get all the kinks worked out for us first, so.
Absolutely. And that's starting to roll out in some of the other counties, too. But I think we've got a lot of lessons learned just from Avery. We want to start smaller, so. And I was talking to Sheriff Fry earlier about how that's going. And it seems to be getting better. With any new thing, you've got to work out certain processes. And I think that's what we're trying to do, so.
So I want, I want to thank you all for that. That was huge. That's huge.
I appreciate your time. Any more questions?
Any more? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we'll move right along with our agenda. Three point four A, our county manager update.
Good afternoon. So in your informational items, there's a couple of things I want to point out. One of them is, of course, Eric Foster in Solid Waste, his Department of Environment Quality Report. It has been timely submitted, so it's interesting to look at those numbers and things. But I want to thank Eric for the job they do. Trash is big business. And making sure that we stay compliant is big business and making sure we don't get any fines. So we appreciate him and his department and all their effort. With the help of the High Country Council of Governments, again, Kelly Coffey this time, we did submit another application for the North Carolina Division of Parks and Rec Trail Grant. Last time, we scored in the top ten. We got to score in the top five to, to get funded. Again, this will, if we were to get the grant, it'll be a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar grant. The county does have to match that with twenty-five percent. That's to go on the Heritage Park, fifty-one acres. It'll be a beautiful trail. It will, you know, help, it not only be a walking trail, but it'd also be a place for equestrian. Can also participate in biking, and it'd also be handicap accessible. So I'm hoping that this time, we will get a favorable vote and get the trail grant because I think that'll be huge for that fifty-one acres and make the Heritage Park a place, a destination for sure. There's also in your pack, in the informational items, a grant with the Dogwood Trust on behalf of Freedom Life, which is the pre-released incarceration support group that I took Ms. Martha and Dennis to look at. And we've been talking to them. He did come to one of our drug crisis meetings. They asked for seventy-two thousand dollars for Avery County to help fund a full-time planning administrator to see if we've got the community to support to start a Freedom Life expansion in Avery County. And that will be a McDowell, it will be Freedom Life. It'll just be in, in our county to serve our citizens. So hope to hear from that grant real soon. And again, the planning stage on this will be over a year to see if we'll be able to, to make it or not, even after we get the grant. There's also a brag letter in there about EMS. Can't thank them enough. These uncertain times, the last sixteen, eighteen months have been really tough on them and appreciate everything they do. So make sure you see that letter and those employees that were part of that call. And to just let you know today, our EMS has got a truck down in McDowell County because they're having a funeral today for one of theirs that they lost due, due to COVID. So I was glad that we could help participate in that. Just a little more update on the Community Development Block Grant. So we're finishing up the current grant right now. We were working on our last house. And then, of course, today was our first public hearing. We'll have a second public hearing on the second. We've already got nine applications. That, that shows you the need. And, you know, in the total amount, the most we can get is seven hundred and fifty. So keep your fingers crossed that we do get that again. The swimming pool, the last day for the pool was yesterday. It was a pretty good sellout. It was packed. So we're going to give them the rest of the week to get the chairs and everything cleaned up. And we will be moving the testing site back over to the pool for the winter, unfortunately with COVID. I'm afraid they tested about ninety-plus vehicles. It was a solid line today. I'm surprised there's no one out there today. So we'll be moving that back over to the pool. It'll be a more contained area, safer. They can do the quick test because it'll be a controlled environment and not out in the elements. Just to remind the public and everyone, the testing is now Monday through Friday, nine to five. So with this surge, they have come back five days a week, nine to five, and on Saturday, nine to two. So that will be available. As of Friday, we had ninety reported positives for Avery County, which isn't horrible. We were still the third lowest in the state, so.
We're doing the tests and have to build the same.
Same hours, yes.
And the same group we do.
Same group, yes, yes. That just takes time for other things for the Health Department because they are just completely slammed with that. Good news on the positives. And I try to look for good news. But we only have sixteen of our total ninety that are under the age of eighteen. Where our neighboring counties, Mitchell and Nancy, Mitchell has thirty-one and Nancy has forty-one. So the month of August, we saw a hundred and fifty-two positive cases for the, for the month of August, where in July, we only had thirty-one. So you can kind of see what's happened with that. Checked again today on our vaccinations. So forty-six percent, we went up another percentage point. Finally got over the forty-five hurdle. They were at forty-six. There are fully vaccinated, that's seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six total people. And seventy-nine percent of our sixty-five and older population is vaccinated at this point. Vaccinations are available at local pharmacies and at the Health Department. You can call the number that we have flashing on our signs out there, seven three three eight two seven three for information of where to go for tests or for vaccine. And I guess you all have heard from Tawada with the FEMA. Now they're wanting to change the amount they pay us a day to run the board for FEMA. So we'll let you know how that handles. I'd say she'll win the, she'll win the battle there.
We're still receiving money from FEMA for use of the.
Yes. She'll get paid for the digital signs, for the testing units, and for any expenses we can incur.
Can you not move that testing unit to the pool and do everything except for the rapid testing it and continue to get paid?
Well, I can ask. We can see. We can see. They might, I don't know if they'd foul on that or not. They've been difficult enough to work with. I wouldn't want to give them any reason to point a finger. So, but we'll keep, we'll keep moving forward with FEMA, that's for sure. So with that said, the county fair starts tomorrow, Wednesday, five o'clock. Five to ten, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Saturday is eleven to ten. It's free admissions. Ride bands will be sold every night. And Ms. Martha let me know today that there is an app on the website that you can download and get a discount on the ride, ride bracelet. So this year, when we have to take the grandchildren, remember you can get discount on the, with the barcode. I talked to DOT this morning on one eighty-four Food Line Hill. What they said is, Philip, we got to get lucky and find some good soul. They're still finding voids, so it's put them behind. They don't want to give a timeline because they're going to have to fix it and fix it right. They did work this past Saturday and they worked Labor Day. So the only day they took off, the company took off was Sunday. So they're doing all they can. And they are aware of how bad Three Mile is getting, one ninety-four. But the plan is to hopefully move straight over there as soon as they can. So I'm going to, this morning, I noticed some of the codes had failed. I'm sure somebody by now has reported it and gone and got those off of the one ninety-four, but it, it's getting there, too. So they are working as hard as they can on the project. But the good news was, it sounds like the state is dedicated to fixing this and fixing it right. So.
So they've not reached the plumbing under Food Line yet, but they're close.
I don't know. They're under the plumbing at Food Line because there's.
Is there just, is there just one contractor working at a time? I mean, my question is, why can't they, one contractor be working there and one be working at Three Mile? I mean, what's the, I mean, why is that not an, an option?
It, it might become an option because they originally thought this would be like a two, two-week, twelve-day project.
I mean.
And we're, we're going into our third.
That place is getting critical, too.
It is. It is. And then I think there's a place on Hinson's Creek that's going to need attention.
I mean, just thinking, maybe we could, I mean, they could call and ask.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm, I'm not sure how much damage there was. I'm sure they're doing it by district. I'm sure they're doing it by district. If you're being District Eleven, wouldn't be in the same district as Hagwood and then other counties. They got it hard.
Well, yeah.
But I'll ask. Any questions about any of that? Okay, that's my report.
All righty, we thank you, Mr. Barner, for keeping us updated and things, even though some things is slow, some things is already past the goals. So we need to be thankful for that. All right, we'll go to 3.4B, our finance officer's report. Caleb?
You going for a new record again this month? I'm going to try, I'm going to try. We're starting off on a good, on a good leg, aren't we? Good afternoon, Board. I have a few items here for your consideration. Item number one, the EMS department is asking that the money being set aside and available for appropriations be moved so they can proceed with the purchase of a new ambulance. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay vehicles, general fund line item fifty-three hundred dot seventy-four hundred in the amount of a hundred and ninety-two thousand. And the credit available for appropriations, general fund line item seven thousand dot six thousand in the amount of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve? All right, Mr. Woody Hall Young made the motion and Blake Vance seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Item number two, the Emergency Management Department is asking that the money being set aside and available for appropriations be moved so they can proceed with the purchase of a new vehicle for the Assistant Emergency Management Director. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay automobile, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot seventy-four twenty in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. And the credit available for appropriations, general fund line item seven thousand dot six thousand in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Woody Hall Young made the motion and Dennis Aldridge did the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And Board, just an update, these were items that we were hoping to be paid by another source, but that other source is still questionable.
Well, ideally, of course, we already adopted it. But in the event that that money does become available, will this be reimbursed back to Canadian appropriations, general fund?
If that was, if they were to open that up, absolutely.
Yeah, I believe. Nothing we've seen has indicated that you can do any capital project.
And I don't think, even if it were, I don't think you could do it in a rear anyway.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that's for certain, that we know about is that nothing's for certain. Hopefully, we'll get more guidance. Every meeting, I've been.
They're going in the morning.
Yeah, I've been in an ALP meeting every single week with Karen Malanti. She does one called Open Office Hours with the School of Government. And each week, she's just saying basically, I wish I had more that I could tell you for certain. We're waiting for Treasury to give the final word.
Is this just a straight pickup? Is it speaking?
No, no, it'd be more like pause.
That's how it leaves?
It's going to have utility, but.
Okay. That's why I was.
Control the trailer.
Yeah. Well, I was wondering because of price, I didn't.
And we're replacing David Charles' old vehicle that seemed a bit better day, ten years ago.
I understand, I understand.
It'll probably be three quarters of the time, at least.
Yeah, and they want to get one that can pull everything that they would need to pull with it.
I understand.
Item number three, the Avery County Buildings and Grounds Department needs a budget amendment for the purchase of the Cannon Hospital property at three fifty-eight Beach Street. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay Cannon Hospital property, general fund line item five thousand dot seventy-four thirty in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And the credit available for appropriations, general fund line item seven thousand dot six thousand in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars, or sixty-six dollars.
Move and approve, second.
All right, Woody Hall Young made the motion and Tim Phillips seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Item number four, the Department of Emergency Management has received money from FEMA for various expenses related to pandemic response. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit FEMA, general fund line item fifty-two fifty dot thirty-three oh four in the amount of nineteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the credit Emergency Management, general fund line item thirty-eight twelve in the amount of nineteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Make to adopt. First question, what's, what is this, is this the, for supplies mostly? I mean, what is that?
What this money came from? I believe a lot of this, I don't have the.
You don't have.
Well, it keeps the books on each reimbursement.
Okay, well, that's not.
I don't have any reimbursement.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
I think this one, the amount that it is, is for our trailer or for our.
That's all I can say, I believe. I just read the word.
I'm pretty sure.
All right, we have the motion on the floor to adopt. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, budget amendment to recognize the settlement agreement for the Department of EMS. Debit salary EMT, general fund line item fifty-three hundred dot zero two two zero in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred, ninety dollars and thirteen cents. Debit FICA administration, general fund line item fifty-three hundred dot zero five hundred in the amount of five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And credit fund balance appropriated, general fund line item thirty-nine ninety in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Make to adopt. Second.
All right, Blake Vance made the motion and Tim Phillips seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Last one up, the E-911 Department has received permission to pay for new addressing software out of E-911 funds. These funds will come out of the E-911 fund balance. Request the Board adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital equipment. This is the E-911 fund, sixty-six hundred dot seventy-four thirty in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the credit Emergency Telephone System Fund Balance appropriated, Emergency E-911 Fund, thirty-nine ninety, in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Make to adopt.
Do I hear a second? All right, Tim made the motion and Woody Hall Young seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Don't get changed, spend that much.
No, not much.
Do it real fast.
Try to do better next meeting, have more or less. More or less will be better.
We want to thank Caleb, Caleb, for the good job he's done and.
Yes, he did.
Anytime he calls, he can say, I'll send it to you.
That's right. I'm here to serve. Anything I can be of a better assistance to you all, I'd be more than happy.
More on the credit, less on the benefit.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.4C, our county attorney's report. Michelle, report.
In my report, the Board will see an updated Emergency Management ordinance regarding the state of emergency. And what this is, is just to update our existing ordinance somewhat, update statutory references. It's been a good time since the previous ordinance was enacted and some of the statute numbers have changed. So it's updating the statute numbers, bringing in compliance with the current statute. And then one thing the Board will notice as well, the expiration of the state emergency under Section eleven. That is now aligned with how the state of emergency is called in Section two, so those provisions mirror one another. So that's, that's what it is. I'll be glad to answer any questions anyone has about it. Try to answer any questions.
You want to have any questions? So I guess we need a motion to approve the resolution?
A motion to adopt the ordinance.
All right.
Move to adopt the ordinance, second.
All right, Tim made the, to pass the ordinance resolution and Blake seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And that's all I have for the Board's consideration.
And we want to thank Michelle because we know her desk is being full with paperwork for the county. And we thank you.
Summer's always busy.
All right, 3.5, staff reports and requests. Do we have anything?
There, Madam Chairman.
Do we have anything in closed session, Michelle?
I do not have anything.
All right, we'll go to 3.7, approval of the minutes for May the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and the budget workshop for July the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, special meeting.
July the twelfth was their special. The budget meeting was May the thirteenth. The July the twelfth was their special meeting, which was canceled from their, you know, July fourth meeting.
Move to approve, second.
All right, Blake Vance made the motion to approve and Woody Hall Young Jr. made the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, and like our managers already talked about, our 3.8 Agenda consent items, we've had time to look over them and learn a lot. Do I, we will adopt those by consent if nobody has any questions. All right, we have our informational items. And then, our upcoming meeting will be September the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one is our next meeting.
And we will have a public hearing for transportation that day at four o'clock.
Okay.
And the airport, we'd like to come by and give them that page.
All right.
So far.
Yeah, nothing else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.